I can't hear anybody. I think so. Testing. Can anybody hear me? It looks like the city of Bonnie Lake, the speakers are muted. Okay, I heard something there. Oh, the speakers are muted again. I can try just calling in if you can hear me. Okay, I can hear now.
Okay, there doesn't seem to be any agenda modifications, so we do have a C E N P update. Uh, Ms. Creel, could you approach Orger?
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Ray J. Creel is the emergency manager here in the city of Bonnie Lake. I have with me joined today Pat Donovan. He is with the city of Puyallup Emergency Management. But more so, you guys, many of you have met him as he's actually our lead planner within the East Pierce Center local coalition that we're a part of with the other six jurisdictions here in the east part of the county. Today, we're going to talk with you about an update to the comprehensive emergency management plan that's due to the state by the end of the year that Pat's been working on diligently for about a year and a half now. So he's going to give you a little bit of an update. That way, we can make you all aware of where we're headed, so you know what to look for in the next month and a halfish as we start to finish the process. Pat, Orger.
Reggie, thank you, and good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Reggie pretty much hit all of the spots, so I'll go into just a little bit more of the detail kind of things. We, as Reggie said, we have been working on this plan for quite a while. It's something that is for organizations and jurisdictions to take on the emergency management process. It's something that is required by the state that a comprehensive emergency management plan be done. And so now, once Epic started in January of 2021, we've been working toward that spot, and the state has allowed us time. And, you know, now the clock is ending here at the end of the year. So we have been working toward putting this comprehensive emergency management plan together for all seven jurisdictions under one plan. And this will be something that the state has not seen before either. So we have been communicating and working with them a lot, and the people that will be reviewing the plan on what are the best steps and how this is going to look and that type of thing. So this plan, the overall part of the plan is there are strategic and operational plans for how each of the communities deal with natural or human caused emergencies. And they don't get into the very specifics of things, and I'll show you a couple of graphs here in a minute. But these are more broad, broad based. There's two parts of the plan. I'll talk about those in a minute, too. But they are mandated. And also, as having a, an emergency management plan, this allows for state and federal grant applications of things. So this is something that we have to do as a mandate by the state. Sets the roles and responsibilities for not only cities but other providers that we ask to become part of any kind of operational plan. It's very specific in that it ties vertically to the county, the state, and the federal plan. So all of this is under the National Incident Management System and all of the different layers, so that we are in concert with all of the other plans that are available. There's essentially two, but really three parts of the plan. The first part is the basic plan, which is the real overarching 30,000-foot view. It's written for executives and for the public as far as how jurisdictions deal on a broad base with emergencies. And then the operational part, the supporting annexes, is how each jurisdiction and their departments will work together and how they will work for mitigation of incidents or events. And then there's actually a third layer, which are the tactical, very specific, threat specific plans, several of which are the East Pierce Lohar Rapid Action Plan, which is just targeted for a Lohar. And here's what we do with that, break glass and do these things, as well as the East Pierce, the Epic Severe Weather Plan. So much more focused and concentrated and on a very specific topic, whereas the other two are much more broad based. And so the basic plan is shown here is at the kind of the strategic level. Here's what the finance departments at, or finance in general, will do, what the administrations will do, and kind of what their responsibilities are in the basic plan. The second part of the plan that go, that we will see is the individual city annexes. And so each department will have responsibilities and kind of overall arching things as far as what they do. The state has provided a really nice template for us to go by, so that we know at the end of this what they're looking for in the plan. And they've given us several different templates to go by. The very traditional one that everyone forever has used is an emergency support function, E S F functions one through 15, and then I think there's number 20. We have chosen as a group, as an epic group, because that's not really how we work. They have provided another one, which is a department template, so it's broken down into the executive department or in the different cities, what communications will do, what Public Works does, how police function. And each one of them, obviously, based on the jurisdiction and the needs and stuff, are just a little bit different. And so then the bottom of this triangle are those supporting plans that I mentioned that were the very specific functional plans as far as severe weather or Lohar rapid action. So to do this, we have participated and worked with a bunch of different groups, obviously all of the jurisdictions. And that's been the best part of this whole thing is to understanding how the jurisdictions operate, meeting staff at these seven different jurisdictions and how things go. We've also involved other stakeholder groups, first responders, obviously. And because the Buckley Fire Department is the only city department, we've also met with Ordin Valley Fire and Rescue, East Pierce Fire and Rescue that handles both Bonnie Lake and Sumner, as well as Central Pierce Fire and Rescue that handles Puyallup. So we've met with all of those. Haven't met with the county yet because we kind of wanted to get things fleshed out, and then we will meet with Department of Emergency Management with them. We've also met with the local hospital group and some healthcare providers, as well as the Tacoma Pierce County Health Department, because obviously in a lot of these emergencies, they will play a large role in that as well. So we met with external groups. The plan is due to emergency management by 12:31 of this year, and we've been checking in with them on a regular basis, and obviously, they know what's coming. They take our information, and they don't score it, but they provide us feedback. For the next one, consider this, think about this, or talk about this in your next plan, those kind of things. But again, they have provided us templates for that. If we can address those things, it will help quite a bit. But obviously, things change, but it will be a real nice feedback forum for us, so that it's a renewal every five years. And we will continue then to, based on their feedback and more information as jurisdictions change and things evolve, we will continue to update that plan and work on that plan. So expect a promulgation first or second quarter of next year, because this will become an official public facing document. If you have any questions for me, be glad to be here. And I know that Reggie, she's been through this process before several times, so she is also the local expert on this and can answer anything you guys have. So I appreciate your time tonight.
Well, thank you. Nate Wetches? Oh, Councilmember Empires.
Yeah, did you coordinate with South Lawn 911 at all?
We met with them on other things, and they know that this is coming, but they're obviously involved in all of the communication efforts that we do. So yes, we have had very short discussions with a few of their people.
So did the topic of the gaps with the radio systems come on?
No, no, not at all. This was just more of an alert and warning type of communication and understanding that we have the two systems, both the Tacoma-Puyallup system and the county system, and that they are together and that people function on both of them. But that was pretty much how we left it at that point.
All right, any further questions? Well, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, if I may just add the last slide of that presentation. This is the opportunity, if the public wants to ask any questions or provide comment, my email is provided on that slide, so they're more than welcome to reach out, so they have that opportunity.
All right, thank you, Ms. Creel. Okay, we do have a public hearing tonight. Madam Clerk.
This public hearing is on A B 23128, Resolution 3178. It's a resolution of the City Council of the City of Bonnie Lake, Pierce County, Washington, adopting the 24 to 2029 six-year transportation improvement program.
Okay, well, now open the public hearing. This is your time to address the council on the item under public hearing. You have five minutes. Please state your name and address for the record when called upon. Call up anyone that has signed up on the signature. I don't think we have anybody on the signature. Does anybody wish to address this issue? Okay, well, I will now Oh, yes, thank you. Anybody who would like to address the issue on A B 23128? Okay, I believe that is sufficient. And I'll close the public hearing. We'll now go on to citizen commentary. All right, citizens, great. This is your time to address the council on city business. City will now enable the video and microphone. For those attending virtually, you will need to turn on your video and microphones on your end if you are wanting to be seen and/or heard. We will start with those who are here in person and move to the virtual comments afterwards. Anybody who's here in person, you will have five minutes. Please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
I'm Jessica Taylor, and my address is Converoyi address, so 32335 44th Place. Greater Bonnie Lake Historical Society. And it's been a long time since we've been here because of COVID. And, you know, we don't get a chance to come out a lot, and so we wanted to just be present to you, to ask you for support, and to just let you know that the Bonnie Lake Historical Society is one that is, looks at the treasures of the city, the history, and all the artifacts of history for the Bonnie Lake area. And we would like your support. We would like you to become members and be part of this and really kind of share in the attic of the Bonnie Lake Society. And so that's what I'm here to do. Thank you.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that, yes. Appreciate you coming up and talking about that. But anybody else with a good of the order? Yes, sir.
My name is Ron Walker. I reside at 10407 174th Avenue, East Bonnie Lake. I too belong to the Greater Bonnie Lake Historical Society. I have lived in Bonnie Lake now for a total of 14 years. In that time, I began to realize that the history of Bonnie Lake is a well-known secret. We do not have a very visible presentation in Bonnie Lake about our history. You were to go around to the average person in this community, you would find that they would probably not even know the history of the most open area in this city called Kelly Farm. I believe that we need to have that area. I also understand in the past that we were, the Historical Society was supposed to be incorporated with the Arts Commission as a viable integration part of the city of Bonnie Lake. I believe that did not take place. I can only speak to that because I was not around when that happened. But I do believe that the city, as we're moving, we've been asked to move out of the building we're in. It's important that we understand what we are going to do with these historical artifacts that we have in place. Without having a place to communicate and display and show these things adequately, I think we are going to lose a large part, the history of Bonnie Lake. And so I am for this council and the city of Bonnie Lake to give consideration to the fact of incorporating the Historical Society into the Bonnie Lake community, as is the senior center, as is the Arts Commission, as is several other things in the city. And so I ask that you put that on your agenda and please consider that in the future, because without that, we have no way of easily making up a idea of where we're going to go in the future. Thank you.
All right, thank you as well. Anybody else with a good of the order?
I'll shake next time. My name is Chris Leira, and my address is 20916 Nagy Island Drive, Lake House, Washington. It's not Bonnie Lake, but it's close enough. So once a year, my wife and my kids and I join this group called Beautify Bonnie Lake. Start off in the morning, we work for three, four hours, get out some fun with all these little hand tools, garden tools. We just show up, we're told where to go, we arrive at the site, we do a lot of work, we leave, everybody's happy. I typically go home and have a nap, and it's a nice, easy, breezy day after that. But I have one other obligation with that group that happens kind of once a year, which is a volunteer meeting, where they all get together and acknowledge the volunteers that dissipated in the organization throughout the year to make it go so smoothly. And they have a nice dinner and celebration, and give each other a pat on the back, which I think is well deserved. And, you know, I think it's easy for people to underestimate the effort that it takes to put that program on. But after four or five years of being at that secondary meeting, you can see the level of effort that all of the group, the board members, you know, they put on, they put towards making that event happen. And one thing that, from my personal perspective, I think is kind of cool, is seeing the council members and the mayor, city staff, and administrators, everybody showing up for that event, because it gives you the chance to interact with the community and let the community see who you are and what you believe in. And it's really a kind of nice small-town thing. So I do want to commend you all for participating in that program, but also, there's two council members in particular that I have seen over the years put a lot of effort in. And it's Councilmember Watson and Councilmember Evans. I'd like to acknowledge you guys specifically for your effort and say thank you.
Thank you.
That's my public comment.
Have a good one. Thank you, Ms. Creel. Anybody else with a good of the order?
Councilman, I'm Dan Dicker, as council member, City Council 173 East, Bonnie Lake, 9391. City Council meeting, October 10, 2023, ordering his strength from the mayor. He said, He said, "I do wish to make an announcement that citizen commentary is roughly about city business only. We're not here to attack any individual, any citizen named." If we do start going down that road, we will cut off your microphone. You understand? Thank you. I don't own a microphone, so I guess not my microphone is going to cut off. "Council, please review several important facts. First, the council is run by rules of order. The people in the people in the council meeting are not controlled by the rules of order, except we are not to shout at the council, make indeterminate loud noises, stamp our feet, clap our hands, or any such disturbance at the council meeting. This is to include making threats to the council or others at the meeting." And important fact here, that's vice versa. As stated in Acosta versus City of Acosta Mesa, 718 F, Third Edition, F is for federal, page 809, Circuit Court, 2013, also stated, also State versus Patterson, 2016. Let's look at the citizen commentary. Commentary is rough about city business only, and we are not to attack any individual. Oxford language roughly means, "In a matter lacking gentleness, being harsh or violent." Second opinion on that is, "In a matter lacking refinement and precision." Oxford language, "Attack," an act of using violence to try to hurt or kill someone. Well, I don't believe any person speaking at the council meetings have ever done anything roughly or by attack. So I guess we need more information on that. It is unconstitutional for a governing body to restrict a member of the public from speaking because it disagrees with their specific viewpoint. It's important for all people to understand there are rules to be followed in council meetings. These rules don't disenfranchise a speaker from speaking as allowed by the Constitution. We are allowed to speak. The First Amendment, Fourth Amendment, Ninth Amendment, and the Fourteenth Amendment control what the people say and do. Mr. Mayor, take care on how you tread on the franchise of the people. Remember, when we pledge allegiance to the flag, the word republic means there is no king or dictator. At twice per month, we pledge this to be true at each, at the council meetings. So I believe that any time the council disenfranchises any person, they have violated the Constitution, and their immunity to be sued, et cetera, becomes very interesting world. Thank you, council.
All right, thank you, Mr. Decker. Anybody else who is present with a good of the order? Okay, we will now start with those that are virtual, people who are who have a name and address for the record. Okay. City will now disable all video and microphone for those who are attending virtually, and next we will go to committee reports. Finance Committee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Committee met today at 5 o'clock upstairs. We approved our minutes. We had a personnel update, which was sent out to council previously. We had a discussion item, Public Services Department, with staff position realignments. There's a couple of positions they want to move and not fill a couple of positions, basically, so there's no effect on the budget in order to keep our department running more efficiently. We had a A B 23119 ordinance for an annual budget amendment that we talked about, had a hearing, or the hearing, rather, will be on the 14th for us. It will be moving forward to assume. We had open discussion. In that discussion, we talked about the attorney as far as like, you know, hiring one versus we currently do as far as we contract, thank you, the city, the attorney. That has been moved on to talk about that retreat in the future. And, 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 Major?
All right, thank you, Deputy Mayor Carter. Can you hear from Community Development?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We did not have a meeting last week. We'll have our upcoming meeting next week.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Long. Okay, can we hear from Public Safety Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next Public Safety meeting is Tuesday, November 14, at 3:30 upstairs in the second floor.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Evans. Don't see any other reports, so we will move on to the consent agendas. Is there a motion?
So who, second?
All in favor say, oh, any discussion. Yes, ma'am, because we're in consent agenda. So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All vote. Thank you. Councilmember Bullock, and let it be known or for the record that the consent agenda has been passed unanimously. We do not have any committee issues at this time, so now we will adjourn the regular council meeting to go into a closed session. That will take 20 minutes per R C W 4230-1404A to discuss a collective bargaining agreement with no actions to follow. Therefore, we are adjourned. Very much.